All right. Hello, I called to order the closed session meeting of the Mayor and City Council at 3:30 PM. Good afternoon, everyone, welcome, and thank you for being here, and thank you to those viewing remotely. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Barra is not present at the moment.
We have a little technical difficulties right now, one moment.
Mayor Protem?
Here.
Councilmember Sharette? Councilmember Canas?
Here.
Councilmember Flores has not arrived yet. Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
Mayor Tran?
Here, thank you. Moving on to public comments for closed session. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments.
No, there... Yes, we have Kimberly Calvin. Would you like to make a comment, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Kimberly Calvin here. I see that you all continue to exhibit absolutely no stopping sense when it comes to protecting the city of San Bernardino from avoidable, self-inflicted lawsuits. I've come before you now three times to state that I sat in front of President Loria of the POA and to assure you of what Councilmember Ortiz's claim declares as admitted by President Loria's statements and his apology. Then you all vote unanimously to put out a defaming statement against Councilwoman Ortiz and expect us to believe that you all have done your due diligence to verify this information because none of you have reached out to me to ask any questions. The community's trust cannot be placed in the mayor and council members who come before the people to state that the city manager recruitment was an ethical and above-board reproach after Councilmember Alexander asked you, Mayor Tran, how did Councilmember Sharette know he'd left his recruitment book at a public event over a weekend and that the book was returned to you? You informed him that you had shared this information with Councilmember Sharette in front of me. This information was shared with all council members, and you all sat there and you lied to the community to vote Steve Kerrigan in to become our city manager, who then sued us, and you all knew this had taken place and this was not an above-reproach recruitment, and that a community member had access to all of the applicants' applications for this recruitment. You would like for us to believe, any of you, as you have all lied to the community and you do not have the community's best interests at heart. So whatever you're fabricating against Councilmember Ortiz, we all know that this is standard protocol for you, Mayor Tran, Councilmember Sharette, Sanchez, Ibarra, and Mayor Protem Figueroa. We don't believe anything you say, and we also know that you will go to great lengths to protect your corrupt deeds. So understand, be extremely careful on how you continue to defame Councilmember Ortiz, myself, and former city manager Rochelle Clayton. You all should know that one day it will be yourselves sitting up here having to identify what you have done, and I am sure that that is really around the corner for you all because you've proven over and over again. Now, the question is whether or not you, Councilmember Canas, and you, Councilmember Flores, are choosing to not use your own due diligence to find out and investigate what you need to know in order to protect the city of San Bernardino. Your whole entire career relies on the decisions that you make right now, as I've stated to you before. So I would hope that you would do exactly that for the betterment of the people of the city of San Bernardino. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any other...
No additional comments.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Mario Flores arrived. We will now convene to closed session at 3:35 PM. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Ortiz just wanted to bring to your attention one of the...
I will be recusing myself for my item number...
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Council. That was really beautiful, and thank you again, Roberto Lopez, for your 45 years in the city of San Bernardino. Enjoy your next chapter in your life. We will now move on to appointments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on items two to four?
We do not have any comments for second.
Who to approve as a slate?
There is a motion by Councilmember Sharette and second by Councilmember Ortiz. Please, Council, use your digital voting. It's on the screen. We're going to take a voice vote per Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Sanchez? Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas? Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
And Mayor Tran?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, Council. I do want to call up, I actually want to recognize Ms. Valerie Litchman and Ms. Carolyn Tillman. They're not able to join us tonight, but I want to thank them both for their many, many years of dedicated service and for their continued commitment to enriching our community through literacy, learning, and access. Their leadership and passion are deeply appreciated. Thank you so much, you both. You're here in spirit, and we will continue to work with you, and thank you so much for what you're doing in our community. I do want to call up Danielle Sanchez. Are you here? Please give her a round sheet, please come up to the stage. Councilwoman, if you'd like to join me to recognize her. This is... You're going to be sworn in by the City Clerk. Right, Ms. Sanchez, you're going to be sworn in by Madam City Clerk.
Danielle Sanchez. I do.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations, Danielle Sanchez. She will be appointed to the Library Board. Would you like to say a few words?
It's an honor, and thank you. I have a master's in management and library information science from USC, and I wholeheartedly will stand with the city of San Bernardino and the library to advocate for the library for what the community needs in guidelines with American Library Association, Public Library Association, and the California Library Association, and to do all I can to really just advocate and stand by and be the strength for the librarians here in this city.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your dedication. Have you sit in the middle, and then we'll take a picture with you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Council. Congratulations again, Ms. Danielle Sanchez. Welcome aboard to the Library Board, and thank you, Council. We will now move on to city manager update. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council and community. It's my pleasure to give you the city manager report as of May 21st, 2025. So first off, fantastic news. Fire Station 226 is now open. On Saturday, San Bernardino celebrated the opening of its newest fire station, Station 226, on Del Rosa Avenue. The station, which accommodates more equipment and staff, replaces the old station, which was built in 1976. Last year, Station 226 responded to 7,655 calls for service, the second-highest call volume in the county. So that's a wonderful addition to our community. Next, the city staff attended the International Conference of Shopping Centers, the largest conference in the U.S., bringing together cities with retailers, site selectors, and developers looking for potential expansion opportunities. Our economic development team held 17 meetings, 11 with developers, five with specific retailers, one with real estate development company. They also connected with other conference attendees at their booth in the Team California exhibit. This is a great story. Microchipping unites dogs with their owner. As you know, Animal Services recently equipped all city fire stations with microchip readers so that lost pets can be scanned at locations across the city. Last week, a firefighter found two dogs and went to Station 224 on E Street to scan them. A quick scan found that both dogs were chipped, and they were able to reunite them with their families. This is a perfect reminder that as, the importance of getting your pet microchipped for free at the animal shelter and that all San Bernardino fire stations are equipped with scanners to help identify lost dogs and cats. The poignant time count. While the county's overall number dropped by 14%, the city's overall numbers went up by 8%. Based upon the count, San Bernardino has just over 40% of the county's documented homeless. This increase can be related to the court injunction, which was in effect nearly all of last year. Some positive news is that our unsheltered count remained basically flat, with most of the increase due to a 25% increase in sheltered homeless, which is those who are in shelters or transitional housing. And we'll talk about a new addition to our community, the navigation center, a little later in tonight's meeting. Congratulations to our graduates. Last weekend, Cal State San Bernardino conferred degrees upon 3,600 graduating students who will be entering the workforce or moving on to graduate school. This weekend, San Bernardino Valley College will hold its graduation at San Manuel Stadium. Congratulations to all graduating students from Cal State San Bernardino and San Bernardino Valley College. And finally, the city will be remembering those that gave their lives and service to our country at a Memorial Day ceremony on Monday, May 26, to be held here at the Feldheim Library at 9:00 AM. Visitors and members of the public are encouraged to attend. And that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz, I do see that you would like to make a comment?
I do. Thank you so much for recognizing the graduates. I just want to say, and I won't name anybody, but I moonlight as the professor up there, and there are quite a few of our city employees who have taken on the task of earning their master's degree, and I've had the pleasure of having them as a professor. And what I just want to say is how proud I am, first of all, of my students, and second of all, is the commitment of our employees to become the subject matter experts in what they do, public works, finance, human resources, budgeting, every aspect. And so, first of all, go Yodis, and just keep up the great work, and I can't wait to see you move on to your doctorate, so thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. We will now move on to public comments. At this time, public comments will be heard on items, for items on the open session and items not on the agenda. To address the City Council, everyone must complete a speaker card and provide it to the City Clerk. Only those speaker cards turned into the City Clerk will be allowed to address the City Council. No late cards will be accepted. Each person should state their name for the record before beginning their comments. As your name is called, please line up in the order announced. We have two podiums available for you. For your convenience, please proceed to either one as soon as your name is called. Once again, if you require Spanish interpretation, we do have an interpreter on site. Please raise your hand at this time if you need interpreting assistance. In addition, we do have interpreting listening devices available in the back. Thank you, gracias. We have 17 speakers tonight. Each speaker will have three minutes. Madam City Clerk?
Lydia Savala, Curtis Goss, Christian Shaughnessy, Al Palazzo, Mike Hartley, Joe Solis, Luis Ojeda, Eric Marquez, Georgia L., Clementina Pena Bernal.
Please state your name. Could you turn on the mic, please?
Good evening, can you hear me? Good evening, my name is Curtis Goss. I guess I can go about the short way. I'm an adjunct professor at San Bernardino Valley College. I came to bring some great news to the council. I wanted to first say, some familiar faces, Mayor Tran, good to see you again, Councilwoman Ibarra, good to see you, and the rest of council members, thank you. The reason why I'm here at San Bernardino Valley College, we applied for a grant, and we were given that grant. The grant, I'll give you a little background information real quick, is from LA-84. If you remember, Los Angeles held the Olympic Games in 1984. Well, they did such a wonderful job, I mean wonderful, they still have revenue residuals coming in and in. So one of the mandates for LA-84 was to go back into the community and provide needs for youth in the community. And at San Bernardino Valley, we applied for that grant, and we received it. And so what we're doing now with the grant is brand-new, it started in March, and ended in March. What we're doing, we're lining up the schools, we talked to the school board yesterday at their meeting, and we figured we can come to the council and ask for your networking, your support in getting this out. We work with youth from third grade to eighth grade. We do clinics, either at their school, or either we will bring them over to the college to do a clinic. The main gist of the clinic is, our clinic is to promote health, a healthy way of life, also self-esteem, resiliency, all these things that we're not seeing now, we promote doing this clinic. Our goal for our first grant is about 1,000 youth, but we figure we're going to hit way more than that, and about 20 clinics. We earmarked this grant for San Bernardino City. We know it can go county-wide. Why, LA-84 has allowed us to move county-wide, but our first move is to dedicate it to the city schools before we move anywhere else with the grant. So we just want to let you guys know that the grant is open, operating. We'll do our first test school in about two months or so, and then from there, it'll be full go. We decided to use local high school coaches to help us with this grant, so that way we can involve the community a lot more. We have coaches from Pacific High School, Cajon High School, San Bernardino High School that will be facilitating this grant also. So we're kind of excited and jazzed about it. The whole thing with the grant is free. No cost to the district, no cost to the schools, it's just free. The whole bill is taken care of by the LA-84 Foundation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, great news. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Lydia Savala. About a year ago Memorial Day, I bumped into Councilwoman Sharette at the, don't panic, at the VFW, representing Teddy Sanchez for a ceremony. We chatted very briefly, and you said, you know, with regard to animal services, I think we'll get there. And a year ago, I believed that it was possible to get further along, but a year's gone by, and I've done a lot of research, and I've completely lost faith that we're going to get anywhere. And the consequences of inaction, failing to enforce spay neuter, not having a mobile van out there to spay neuter, has taken a toll because our intake has risen from 5,200 to almost 8,000 in four years. Since 2020, there's been a 53% increase in the total animal intake. Since 2020, a 51% increase in annual intake of dead animals, and a 287% increase in the euthanasia of animals. Those are just three reasons to justify the need for a change of leadership, and I have 50 more on my list. You know, before, you know, initially, when I first started looking into this, there was a, the budget was two or three million, and then it rose to five or six million, and now it's 11 million, and we're not doing, and we're doing worse today than we were four or five years ago. I was recently asked about my political affiliation, and my response was, "I'm a capitalist, I'm an investor, I believe in more bang for your buck, and I want to see productivity." Productivity is not the adoption of 949 animals when the nonprofits do the bulk of the work. And of those animals that got adopted, probably, you know, they were free. We have a $1.1 million vehicle that is still gathering dust, and what's amazing is if you look at a local nonprofit, like the Animal Action League of Joshua Tree, on an $800,000 budget, they spay neuter 5,000 animals a year on an $800,000 budget, and they end up with a $100,000 surplus. We have the vehicle to do that, you know, that's what we should be doing. So when I went to school, I was sort of like a nerdy cost accounting junkie. My teacher measured everything in units of Jack Daniels, he held my attention. And the problem that I see today is that most of our costs are variable costs, which are avoidable costs. If you reduce the pet overpopulation, you're not going to need an $11 million budget, and it's time to bite that bullet.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Al Palazzo, Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager. As a kid, my world was Mount Vernon. On Sundays after church, I went downtown to the movies. As an adult, I have the education to learn from the experience of visiting so many great cities, cultures, and nations, traveling the world. This life experience has added more ideas to a vision for rebuilding San Bernardino. I would use these ideas to rebuild San Bernardino if I were your city manager. In 1963, I was deeply moved by Dr. Martin Luther King's speech, "I have a dream." I wish my dream to rebuild San Bernardino would inspire you to make me part of your team. I could do both the city manager and economic development director jobs. Pay me for one position, or half of the city manager's salary. The money you save could be used for youth programs, and you need more staff, all of you, interns. I will support young adults after high school to continue to develop their gifts and talents through the performing arts theater, the Civic Light Opera used to do this. I would even try to establish a dinner theater venue. My interest started with the Ford Foundation program that took economically disadvantaged students from Franklin Junior High to the Civic Light Opera. This experience culminated with the trip to Hollywood Bowl to hear Ella Fitzgerald. Even though I am serious by nature, I would try to make the environment at City Hall enjoyable, even fun, doing serious business, running and rebuilding the city. I will be the first to apologize if I offend you. Humility and respect are values that were instilled in me and by which I try to live. I want a moment of silence for Ruben Waddes, whose services will be Friday. He worked for the city for 50 years in the engineering department. He designed University Parkway. I mentioned him last time, and nobody took the time to mention his name for a moment in science. He worked for this city for 50 years. He came back after 35 years, three times, at five-year intervals, because he loved this city much, and he loved what he did. I was in the trenches when that, he would take me out to see when University Parkway was being graded, and it was, and this is why I will honor my brother, whose burial services will be Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Council, my name is Georgia. Animal Services has had another devastating month.
Animal Services has had another devastating month. In just 20 days, 323 animals are dead, 200 killed by staff, 93 arrived dead, 30 died in their care, and that doesn't include at least 11 animals that have disappeared during the same period of time. Despite claiming to have hired relief vets, we've seen no updates, no clinic dates, no media promos, or evidence of their presence. Animals continue dying in their kennels, even with four registered vet techs allegedly on staff. Then just yesterday, new job postings went up for vets and support staff. So which is it? Do we have relief vets, or what? Or was that just more smoke in mirrors? You built a new isolation building costing us over $500, half a million, yet disease still spreads. That building functions more like the culling ward these days. I don't see quarantine animals, only those lined up to be killed for space, many without confirmed illness. It was so poorly planned, misused, and incredibly, someone didn't even measure it correctly. All those expensive kennels did not fit, and still, no accountability. Let's talk about enforcement, or lack of it. Breeding is unlawful in this city, and county for that matter. Yet this city allows it to continue unchecked and unobstructed. You even promoted an illegal breeding event this past weekend that you took down after Sharon Negretti admonished you for it. Why enable the very crisis Animal Services is supposed to prevent? Because these animals bankrupt a bankrupt city. In 2020, when Christine Watson was hired by who knows who, the shelter's budget was under $2 million a year. Today, it exceeds 11 million in a city where the majority of its citizens live at or below poverty level, and still, more animals die. The public is misled, and management continues expanding office space while the shelter deteriorates and we go for broke. As you finalize the budget, do the right thing. Cut the fat at the top, not from life-saving staff, not from basic care, and not from the community. We demand free spay neuter services now. And stop rendering our animals. There are crematoriums in this city. Contact with them, and if rendering really is the cheapest option, is rendering really the cheapest option at $7,500 a month. We also need new leadership in this department. Leadership that doesn't push policies that devastate our community, abandon accountability, and leave only suffering and destitution in their wake. And finally, this is a community shelter providing a community service, funded by our taxes. It should be called "community service." We are not your customers.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Clementina Piña Bernal. I have two issues right here, which one of my issues is Georgia and Ms. Savala she already addressed. So I'm 100% supporting those words. And my second issue will be the letter that we received from VERTEC. Back in May 23, you guys started the proposal for the VERTEC services increase. Back then, you're 5%. When we do the numbers and the graphics, there was mail, which I still have copies of it, reflect 43%, not 5%. So as well as many discrepancies that was found on the letter, like the address to mail that notice, and a couple things. Now, what we asking, or I'm asking as a resident, is to be more clear. Clearity on what according to you now will be your percentage. We also need to be a better way to represent our voice. Either by mail, which on the letter, you guys are talking about coming to the meeting, representing, giving our verbal testimony, but we don't have an address. Not everybody are able to come to these meetings, especially at this time. You know, most people are barely getting out of work. So you need to make it more accessible for this. We understand the inflation, you know, changed a lot of these things. But residents like us, and a lot of people that, yes, live out of social security and a lot of these things, you know what, we cannot afford all these increments. You need to be clear, what your number is going to be now. And like I say, make it accessible to what it's going to be. Make a meeting on Saturday. I know this is probably more comfortable for you because now meetings start at 5 o'clock, and you're going to go home and rest. But like I say, a lot of these people are barely coming. You know, we are taxpayers. We live, not in America, because America is a whole continent. We live on USA, on a very powerful country. I'm from Mexico. Mexico have no charge, no charge for residents. So we should be able to afford not many increments. We already start back when you guys do the Proposition 18 and all those increments for the special tax when we were on bankruptcy, and we have to keep our emergency department. And we're still paying for it. What happened? Our city already grow. We have all these new industries around the pay thousands or millions. We have the airport. What happened? How are taxes are used in the city?
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Mike Hartley. My AC went out at my house, so I thought I'd come down here and watch a show. You never know what you're going to get here. Could be a drama, could be a thriller, could be a comedy. And no matter what, when you leave, you say, "What the hell was that all about?" You guys get nothing done. You guys argue with each other. You're like kids. I remember when I was like a kid, my mom pulled my head out of my ass and it hurt. You guys need to do the same thing. You guys need to work together. Because the city is falling apart. You may think it's great. Drive down the residential areas. I'm not the only one who complains about code enforcement not doing their frickin' job. Everybody complains to me about it. I send it into the CRMs. You think it's just me complaining? No. It's people who are worried that their neighbor's going to do something to them, so they don't report them. I'm the one who does it, and I'm not scared to report them, because this city used to be beautiful. It is to the shits now. Now pull your head out of your asses and do something. And I am not kidding. You guys got a budget coming up? You need to double your code enforcement, double it. And I have a meeting with your new manager. Your last manager blew me off 100 times, wouldn't talk to me. But he was a Marine. I guess he was worried about me kicking his ass. I don't know. But I'll tell you what, this budget, you better do something. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next speaker. Ma'am, Sid Cart, would you like to call the next?
Kim Calvin Delores Armstead, John Schollenberger, Barbara Sky, Les, Damon Alexander, and Sharon Negretti.
Please state your name.
Joe Salis, Fourth Ward. Real quick, as a commissioner for Parks Recreation, I'd like to thank our staff for the great work that they're doing. We met a couple days ago, and I'd like to thank Chair Donas, Vice Chair Harris, Commissioners Barera, Flores, Martin, Almanza, Negrete. And this is to all the council, because you appointed them. They're very professional. Thank you for bringing them to the, and thank you for re-upping for the ones who are still there. It was a productive conversation. A couple months ago, I think it was Councilwoman Ortiz, and then Canaz, who concurred that the commissions should be able to, amongst themselves, decide when they want to meet. And so we have that on our next budget item, to meet at a different time. And I encourage for the other commissions, if they feel a need to amongst themselves, to look at possibly changing the times of their commissions. One of the factors that we were weighing, this council member Canaz, was the cost to staff and, you know, security considerations that you had brought up earlier. So thank you for all those guideposts in how that's done. On the idea of Item 20, on the proposal for future commission items, I don't know, it seems like commission items that are proposed to talk about, get talked about on this agenda and not in the future, but wherever it may lie, whether it's in the next couple hours or in the future, on the idea of changing possibility, Rosenberg's Rules of Order, to Rosenberg's Order, I'd like to ask our, and I know he can't comment, our city attorney, the first question I would consider is, is this a best practice? In your legal mind, as a parliamentarian, and maybe this would be an opinion from the clerk's office, too. How would, of the clients that BBK does advise, does give legal advice to, I'd like to know how many of the cities that BBK advises actually follow Rosenberg's Rules of Order? Because I'd never heard of it before, and I just, you know, student government and stuff like that. And I know, I believe, Congress and many other parliamentary bodies follow just Robert's, you know, version, whatever it may be, 10th, 11th, whatever. And then, do you think this is also a decision to just hastily go into? Are there other considerations that we need to consider? And then also, when really looking at anything that goes through, there was an interesting, I really learned a lot, and give praise to the Rhodemont Neighborhood Association. I really learned a lot just listening to the concerns of those in the Fifth Ward. And I didn't know that we had some goals for 2025. They are fiscal capacity, community engagement, improvement of quality of life, roads, parks, whatever that may fall into, economic growth, and I didn't get the last one. And for everything that this council sees, I'd like to see you make every decision that you do follow those five goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
I'm Eric Marquez, and it's a pleasure to be speaking before you today. Now, I wrote a couple notes on why I should be saying. Item number 20, Robert's Rules of Order, classic, one of my favorite books. I especially love the 1984 edition. I love skimming through it over and over again. And also, I'm pretty sure that Theodore just wants it because he's too stupid to understand them. It's just sad. But then again, what can you expect from someone who's being recalled still? And then there's my opinion on code enforcement. I've heard that, ah, a moratorium on fireworks, that was a while ago. Now, it's wonderful. It would be great if we could enforce it. But unfortunately, we can't even enforce the no fireworks above the 210 ban we have. I urge the council to focus on code enforcement for the foreseeable future, because what's the point of passing your ordinances if they can't be enforced? And also Fred, our city's own Blue Falcon. I really love that term. It fits you just right. And that's the professional portion. Now, here's my garden. I have strawberries. I'm very excited. And the plum trees are doing well. The peach tree, sprouted little peaches, but we took them off because I heard that it could stunt their growth if you don't let them, you know, settle in for like the first year or two. Then the peaches aren't as good or plentiful, and also the trees just weaker. Sad. And the rose bush I stole, the pens I stole, hand sanitizer I stole. I'm just going things off the top of my head, what I could remember from this week. I stole some hand sanitizer yesterday, stole some pens. It was a nice pen. I regret not stealing more. As for the hand sanitizer, it was a year past the date, but was still very flammable, which is good. And then there's my cat Frederick. I still think and know I'm better than all of you because I have a cat, and it reminds me of Fred with his name, Frederick. Wonderful. I could sit here for another 29 seconds and no one could stop me. Okay, well, it was nice seeing you all again. Sorry for missing last meeting. It was my mother's birthday. She's old, well, not as old as Fred. But then again, I think you could be my grandfather. You've almost been in office as long as I've been alive. It's true. Why are you laughing? Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Delores Armstead. When will we begin updating the city's strategic plan before we get more car washes, storage, and warehouses, especially in our residential neighborhoods and on the west side? We need to drastically deal with zoning in this city. Look at the cities around us. They're all progressing. We are the seat of the county, and we look like a dump because of you, the ones that have been here a long time. No restaurants, no shops. We can and should be better. You are the council, and several of you, Fred, have been here too long. What is the status of the RFP for legal services? We need honest bidding in contracts, not just for legal services, but all our services. It is time to stop. It is time to review our legal contract. It is past time for reviews, and it's time for change. Item 20, can you explain to the public the difference between Robert's Rules versus Rosenberg's Rules? The citizens need to know why Sanchez is pushing this so hard. We know it's not for the benefit of the city. Anything he's pushing is not for the benefit of the city. What is the progress of OXPO? We keep asking, nothing's happening. We see no progress. Fifth District, can you please let your citizens know what is going on with OXPO? We went through another winter. We went through more wind, and nothing has happened. Now something humorous. People, have you seen the response from Sanchez, response to local recall, regarding his recall? He claims outsiders, outsiders, want him out of office. It's because of outsiders that we're getting cartels and drug shops. Outsiders are causing all this, right? Outsiders are asking for his recall. Not his corruption, not his payoffs, it's outsiders. Oh my God, what are we going to do, huh? It's because of Sanchez that we have such a safe city, because he's kept those outsiders away from here, right, Mr. Sanchez? Not because you got paid off. Let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Luis Ojeda. I didn't know that it was like a amateur comedy night today. Otherwise, I would have been ready. Trust me, I know a few jokes. But anyways, I'm not here for that. So I just want to, I want to keep it positive today because I'm very, very happy. And I want to tell you guys why. When the PISA people start saying, "Don't go by baseline because there's a bunch of highway patrol people pulling people over." You know, they're working. Then, in the last 70 years that I've been around, I don't remember seeing any police cars pulling anybody over. And lately, I've seen a bunch of them, just like, "What? Okay, it's good." So today, I was around the city, and I saw the city employees working, trimming trees and parks. And I'm like, "What? In the north, in the south, in the east, everywhere. I see action." And finally, I feel finally, I think that we're in a good place where we can start moving forward. So let's keep the momentum, right? Let's keep the momentum. And let's talk about what can we do? Let's start with ourselves. So I'm going to give you guys an example, right? So there was a neighbor from the north side, okay, they're always talking about sides, right, from the north side. So I attend anybody from any side, right? They had a problem with their sidewalk, right? It looked like a ramp, right, for a few years, I guess. So they reached out to me through a business owner, and I reached out to Ernesto. And he was kind enough to say, "Luis, we have like 500 of those, but let's see what we can do." And I believe, right, but I verify. So I went by there, and they cut the tree down because it was an overgrown root that was pulling the sidewalk up. They removed the tree, they removed the sidewalk, and now they're about to put the new sidewalk. So for me, that's very, very encouraging. So thank you, Ernesto. Thank you, Public Works, for that. And this is what we need to do, is like, to care. So also, you know, with the city manager and the Public Work Director, we took a little tour. And because I like to help people accountable, and I don't want to say, "Oh, you think that I'm just making things up? Let's check it out." And they say, "Okay." And you gave me good news earlier. And I'm looking forward to see it and to take a video of what is about to come, because I'm very because I'm very excited because that problem has been going on for years. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Damon Alexander. As a past district commander of the American Legion, the largest and oldest veterans organization in the country, I want to sing a symphony to remind everyone under the sound of my voice and in this council room about Memorial Day again. It is important between the barbecues and the pool parties that we remember are those who lost their lives serving our country. It is important that we train our children up to go to some event within this city or anyplace to say thank you for those who put on that uniform. It is important that we share this day, Memorial Day. Because the reason why we get to get up here and say for three minutes, the reason why we get to sit in this room, the reason why we have the lives we have today is because somebody put on that uniform. You owe a moment on Monday to say a prayer, to say thank you to some widow for their sacrifice on Memorial Day. It should not be forgotten just because it's a holiday and you serve and you get a day off. It is more than that. And I'm just here to remind you that it means something. As the past 25th district commander for this county and an advocate for our veterans, even though I'm out of uniform, I still serve. And my service today is to remind you of that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Les. Council, Councilman Alexander. I hope you have Councilwoman Calvin's back because she's being blamed for something that she didn't do and something that you did. So hopefully, you served that and helped her with that. Salute to my brothers and sisters that's doing work in the trenches in the community, doing the people's work, doing more work than our city council. That's just my opinion. These meetings are too early. Please bring back the Zoom, public comment Zoom. Recall Theodore Sanchez and old man Fred. The city, city attorney. Ortiz already exposed the city attorney and the company that she worked for. So let's stop trying to play the games with the city attorney being such a good person. You guys, Theodore Sanchez, old man Fred, and the city attorney, you guys dropped that ball with the, with the mall right across over here, Carousel Mall. You guys dropped the ball on that. And then now we getting sued because the whole lie with Alexander. And then you guys make Councilwoman Calvin look bad. You guys assassinated her character because of that whole lie. So, and the city attorney knew the truth. So she was a part of that BS, too, as well. What else? Whenever you guys do vote on the computer, we should see who's voting yes or no on the computer. We don't see that at all. We just see approved or not approved. We need to see who said yes and who said no, just to make it fair. What else? Pimmin, I know you probably watching right now, but you need to be down here handling this lawsuit with Ortiz. It was your fault that Ortiz is even suing right now. So now the city has to deal with something that you did. So Pimmin needs to be down here talking to Ortiz or talking to the city, whoever he needs to talk to. He need to be down here handling that. What else? To my fire department, I would like to see you guys try to build or do, help get an emergency shelter because we done seen fires. We see the fires that happen in LA. So, you know, we have fires out here in San Bernardino all the time. So I would like to see an emergency shelter if you guys can actually work on that. That'd be kind of smart. What else? Oh, oh, yeah. To my police department, to the POA, please stop endorsing these people. Pimmin, you guys endorse Pimmin. Stop endorsing people. Every time you guys endorse people, it seem like they're all corrupted. And to the officer that shot the guy in the back, and now we paying $5 million. Hopefully, he's off the force and he's not around anymore. We got warehouse jobs for him. If he need a warehouse job, that's cool. Or you can go pick up some trash somewhere. What else? Yeah.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Barbara Sky. I'm here tonight as the president of the Verdunmont Neighborhood Association, and I'm also here as a private citizen. Last night, we had a Verdunmont neighborhood meeting, and I thanked the mayor for coming and addressing the residents. Everything was going well until Kim and her gang of four came in and disrupted the meeting. It's an embarrassment to say. It's maybe not a violation, but it is very inappropriate. Anyone is invited to come to our meeting as long as you behave yourself. Kim, I understand now. I did it wrong. I invited you to every meeting that I've had since you've been elected. You never showed up. You never addressed the situation. No texts, no phone calls, no emails. You can shake your head. But now I know, I won't invite you, and you will show up. And perhaps you'll bring your buddies along so you can disrupt the meeting. Last night, the mayor did a heck of a good job. She addressed a lot of things from the neighbors that should have been addressed to our councilperson. And the mayor pointed that out, and she was also sitting in the back of the room. She wanted to tell everybody she was making this motion and that motion and everything, and there was good things to come in the future. But Kim, you should be telling your constituents that. One of her commissioners, Renika, which is our planning commissioner, was trying to take control of the meeting. After too many questions, I went up and asked her to hurry up and finish so everyone else could have a chance. She verbally attackeded me. There were several things said against me, but the one thing that really pissed me off was she said I was racist. You guys should do your homework. I have 14 great and grand, great grandchildren and great grandchildren. I have one colored grandchildren, and the rest of them are all Mexican. So you guys don't know what the hell you're talking about. Every time you don't get your way, it's racist. And I'm tired of that shit. So, you know, nothing can get done in this city because of Kim, of Teddy, Fred, Juan, and Sandra. And it's about time that these guys all get elected out or recalled. And Robertson's rules? I'm not sure if our charter will even allow that because I know they designate how we run this city in our meetings. And anyway, it'll never work for you, council, because none of you have respect for one another.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, Sharon Negretti. I don't even know what to say.
My name is Renika Galande. I am the planning commissioner, and I'm the one who was referenced in that comment.
Ma'am, you are out of order.
That is not what happened.
Ma'am.
I was verbally attacked by Barbara.
Ma'am, I'm gonna ask you.
I do. My speaker slips, this is the second time which my speaker slip has purposely been removed.
I am gonna warn you again, you're out of order. We're, we're having a speaker right now, and your name has.
And I have purposely been removed twice, Ms. Helen.
Ma'am, ma'am, city clerk, what's her name called?
And that is not true. I will not allow Barbara to degrade me and blatantly lie.
I'm gonna warn you.
She attacked me. You were there, you saw it.
I'm gonna ask you to be escorted. If you do not, please.
That is not what happened.
You have not been called.
This woman has sent me.
Ma'am, city clerk, have she been called up?
I have received through her group of people anti-Semitic messages. I have never provided anyone with my personal email, and I've received harassment from this group.
It's out of order. Thank you. I'm sorry about that disruption. Ma'am, please. Hi, my name is Sharon Negretti. Okay, wait up. One more time. I'm Sharon Negretti. I don't even know what to say anymore. I'm at a loss, but I come up with something. But anyway, hundreds of healthy animals. Our city's innocent residents were murdered this week. Murdered by you. Your inaction, your complacency, your failure to enforce existing ordinances has resulted in a bloodbath. This isn't a mistake. It's a consequence of your negligence. The accidental breeding you tolerate is a cynical money-making scheme. Flooding our streets with unwanted animals. The online rehoming scams are a cruel charade condemning innocent puppies to a life of neglect or death. You know this. You see the flood of online ads. You've chosen to ignore it. One rescue out of hundreds this week rescued 11 dogs that were dumped on our street. Your so-called spay and neuter ordinance is a joke, a hollow promise rendered meaningless by your lack of enforcement. This isn't about stray animals. It's about your declaration of duty. It's about the blood on your hands, people. I demand immediate action. No more excuses, no more empty promises. We need immediate aggressive enforcement of this bay and neuter ordinance. Meaningful fines, not slaps on the wrist. It's about, if it's about the low income, this is a low-income city. Find other ways. They can do community service or volunteer or something. But there needs to be some active enforcement. There needs to be a citywide public awareness campaign that doesn't sugarcoat the consequences of irresponsible pet ownership. A complete reevaluation of our animal control system. We need proactive solutions, not reactive killing. Furthermore, we need a task force assigned to go out and uncover these backyard breeders. Honestly, it's not that hard. You do not know how many ads I have seen for puppies this week. You don't accidentally, your dog doesn't accidentally have puppies. It's, it's just, what? They need to be held accountable for this. Please, please do something. I beg of you. This has to be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Kimberly Calvin. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to comment on a few things. One, our city manager's statement about the 8% increase in our unsheltered community. And here still, we have no plans for any intermittent shelters. I did want to draw your attention to the American Rescue Plan information that you have put out. And I see here that for the ASU, the dilapidated building that we had tenants living in in Councilmember Sanchez's ward, $76,500 were given out to help to move those people out. But yet, folks are still residing in that dilapidated building in Councilmember Sanchez's ward. We have the motel voucher program, which has $973,500. And to this day, we've only expelled 2,713. That is questionable, and we need to make sure, understand why is it that we have only expended that amount of money? Councilmember Sanchez, I'm concerned as to why you would want to change over to the Rosenberg's Rules of Order. But I did read them, and I do believe that I understand why. And that is because you then would be able to challenge the chair. You then would be able to end discussion. And then you would be able to say exactly what you wanted to say, which we saw in your enactment last council meeting when you and the mayor were in an utterly argument. But I wanted to also make sure that Ward One was able to hear your response to the recall. Do not sign this petition. This is phony recall by outsiders who want to flood our community with pot shops that will help to bring more crime and violence to our local neighborhoods. As your council member, I have opposed the cartels. You've been working to oppose the cartels. Is that why you have not brought a downtown in your seven years of being on the dais, representing Ward One? I would suggest that you would reverse that and stop fighting the cartels and focus in what is most important to the 227,000 people that live in this city and definitely those that live in your ward. We want a downtown. But what you have done to this point is nothing but sabotage a downtown, you and Councilmember Charette. And you all will all both take the responsibility of that. If BB and K were to stand up and be the type of attorneys that we need to have for this city, but I would like to ask and wonder, where is Ms. Carver Hall? Where is Thomas Rice? Where is Mr. Baltimore? Here we have Albert. No, no, nothing against Albert. But he is not contracted to be sitting in that seat, so on your Carver Hall is. Thank you.
Next speaker, please state your name.
John Scholemberger, Seventh Ward, City of San Bernardino. I wanna, I wanna talk to the community about, I went home and watched the last council meeting, the rest, the rest of it. Poor Helen Transcontinental. She's trying to do something good. She says, I want to go out for an RFP for some, for some new legal services. Give everybody an opportunity. I even shared that video with younger people in our city to try to get them interested in civic affairs. And the one kid, he says, she's right. She's absolutely right. He agreed with everything he said because he said it's for the good of the people, being fiscally responsible. And what happens? Ted Sanchez over here starts in with his, with his bullying on this. It starts talking over you, Helen Tran. He started disrespecting you and talking over you. And the next thing I know, they all started to turn and attack you. It was the reenactment of the Jerry Springer Show. It was disrespectful, absolutely disrespectful. Now you wonder why you're being recalled, huh? Okay, the only adult in the room on that council was Treasurer Ortiz. She had to sit there and remind people, hey, don't give up your rights. Stop and think about what you're doing. Where, if you want to make, you know, do something like this, stop and think about what you're doing. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna commend you when you do something good, Helen. But when you don't, I'm not playing around with this council anymore at all. That woman right there was assaulted. When you assault this lady and you attack her, you attack me. Don't attack me. This woman has done more for this city in the last six years than I've seen any, anybody up on this council do, holding people accountable and trying to save the city of San Bernardino and trying to save our reputation. I wasn't born and raised in this city, but I have a heart for this city. I came here in 1971 as a kid, and I, and it never left my heart. My mom, my dad, and me all came from Riverside to San Bernardino for years for the shopping. My dad loved this city when, when he was working here at Langendorf Bakery in the, in 1971. Because he said, you know what? I like, I like the people there. I like the people. Treasurer, you got a heart for this city. And the reason? You weren't, you weren't raised in the corruption. You weren't conditioned to it. You and I come from the outside. We see what, what a city is supposed to be. Riverside was taken over by Orange County in 1980. And it was probably the best thing that could have ever happened. Paved streets, new parks, and everything else. You have the same heart for this city. I fight like a dog to keep Arrowview nice. And you're there with us in the fight. So you just, you stay the course in whatever you have to do for us. I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Ma'am, city clerk?
There's no more speakers.
No one. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did receive a written comment that's been provided, and it was on the dais, and it's part of the agenda backup.
Thank you. We will now move on to consent calendar, items five to 17. Mr. City Manager, is there anything to be pulled on your end?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, item number 13. We'd like to give a brief presentation on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Barra.
No polls.
Thank you. Councilmember McAnos. Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
Just a question on number five, please.
Five. Mayor Potem Figueroa?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Flores?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Charette?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Charette?
No.
Thank you. There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second for the balance. Thank you. Thank you, council. Item five, Councilmember Ortiz.
Madam City Clerk, so this item is the minutes. I just wanted to know, how far outstanding are our minutes? Are these going to get us up to date on everything?
So we have a combination of minutes dated back to 2020. So there's portions of minutes that are completed for each year. So what I'm doing right now is we are doing current ones for 2025, and then we're also doing, we're working on clearing 2024 first and just going in reverse. So this does not, not clear the entire backlog, but we're working to get them posted.
So if, if someone wanted to go back and review something, is it just having to watch the meetings at this point, or are they able to, how do we solidify it? Because there's a couple of meetings, I was looking back at 2020, that didn't have. So is it just that right now, the video is our, our documented minutes?
So for if there, some of the, some of the meetings do have what we call an annotated agenda, which is all the actions and some additional notes that are included. So it just depends on if they're set for those years. I can attest to the fact that we do have from 2022 to current annotated agendas for each meeting, but for 21 and 20, then I can't attest to those.
Are those available to the public? I know we get them.
Yes, they're on Laserfish.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I'm motion to approve.
Thank you.
Was it pulled? It wasn't pulled?
No, it was, it was just to question, oh, no, for number five is to, for Councilmember Ortiz to ask questions.
You just made a motion to approve. It's been approved already.
No, it was for the balance to be approved.
We already voted on that.
We pulled five and 13.
Okay.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, you motioned.
Oh, I motioned. I'm sorry.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Flores. Please use your digital voting. Thank you. Thank you, council. We will now move on to item 13. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Interim Director Jeanne Fortune will give this presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and City Council. As the city manager had said, myself, Jeanne Fortune, and our grants manager will be presenting the American Rescue Plan update. So to give a little bit of a background, the city was awarded 77 million, a little over 77 million through the American Rescue Plan Act. And we met the deadline with the Department of Treasury, and we committed all funds as required by December 31, 2024. And the funds committed and approved by the mayor and city council have been allocated to 28 different projects and are projected to be fully expensed by December 31st, 2026. So the city is on track to expense all those funds. So based on that, like, like we, I had mentioned, we have a total allocation of 77 million. Of that, we have spent 30 million, and we have an unspent balance of 46 million. Now, in the last quarter, we spent 5 million, and we have seven quarters to go. That's why we know if we, if we keep doing this expense each quarter, we would meet the deadline and expense all of the funding. So this was part of the attachment, and this just shows how much has been allocated, committed, and spent. So what we wanted to do is provide some project highlights. Yeah. So as everyone, as everyone is aware, the Feldheim Library Animators Space has now been started. The RFPs for construction is scheduled for release next month. Yeah. And by the way, should City Council have any questions? All the department directors said they were going to be here and talk about their projects.
That's beautiful.
Yes. So the next one is Sacum Park, the revitalization project. City Council's aware, this is a little over $12 million project funded by ARPA, of which we actually had that groundbreaking a few months ago.
A million dollars from the tribe, don't forget.
Okay. And then our next one is Laddle Creek Park. So we did issue a notice, the Futsal Field Project, and construction is currently well underway. And I believe Azam has to, we expect this to actually be completed in June, by next month. This should be done. Yeah. And then our last project that we're highlighting, is that the last one? Yeah, is the Real-Time Information Center. Oh, I'm sorry. We have now issued purchase orders to the vendors that were going to be part of this major project, so we can implement a real-time information center for our public safety personnel. And our last project is street maintenance. So we did issue purchase orders to Horizons and Hardy and Harper. These are asphalt contractors that are used by a lot of cities for street maintenance and resurfacing work. So we are recommending that. City Council, receive and file the report regarding the use of American Rescue Plan Act, and as agreed, we will come back next quarter to give an update. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I do see Councilmember Ortiz have a comment.
This is great. I'm, I'm happy. I know that a lot was allocated at the very last minute of last year. So this is cool. I wanted to, if you would, go to the budget numbers, and I just want to seek some clarification. So the motel voucher program was allocated 973,500, but it's saying we've, we've only expended 20, $2,700? Is that accurate?
Well, as of March 31st.
And from, so from the beginning of the year till right now, so three months?
Yeah. Yes. Um, yeah. Can you talk about your voucher?
Okay.
I'm going to let Cassandra.
Okay.
Okay, so although it's true that motel voucher program did receive $973,000 in ARPA funds, we have CDBG funds, and we also have several other funds attributed to the motel voucher program. In total, up to date, we have approximated $455,000 for our motel vouchers.
Okay, that's, because that's what I thought you had reported last time, so I just want to make sure. Perfect. And then for the navigation construction, we've only expended a million, so that's still, we still have funds to move for there, or we still have funds available?
Correct.
Okay. And then on the standard economic development software program, it's a 10 million standard allowance, and we've expended 64,000?
Yeah.
But there was only a budget of 129,000, so I just want to...
Yeah, it should be clear, the 10 million standard allowance, if I can find it right there, was meant for number 25, 26, and 27.
Altogether?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those three are using the 10 million standard allowance, and we've spent already 8 million of that, more or less. Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, so that's for our land management system, our new financial system, and again, the economic development software, because the software alone is only about 130,000 of that 10 million.
No, I appreciate it, and, and thank you for that clarification. I think what's extremely important is that we're using the money. And, and so being able to, when, when the public or myself looks something, looks at something, and like, what do you mean? So I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Jeanne, if you can please take a look at item 21 on that list, the mobile showers. I know, I believe we contracted with, what's the name of the agency?
Community Action Partnership?
Community Action Partnership, yeah, exactly. That was for the mobile shower. So I'm seeing that what's expended, what's been expended for the mobile showers is 99,000. Are we, are we expecting that there will be a balance left once the, once the, once those showers are required?
No. I think, yeah, I think the intent is to spend all 150,000.
Okay. Because I'm assuming the 99,000 was for acquisition of that mobile showers. So is that before it's been fully equipped? Because those are big, I mean, you could see it from space. These things are huge, and they're going to provide a vital service to our homeless population here. Just want to know if 99,000 was it?
And I have not looked at this budget, so I'm not completely sure, but we've just done a recent audit of Community Action Partnership. They've actually expended closer to 80% of their initial budget, and as a result, we entered into a new contract agreement with them. But I have not seen these numbers, so I, I don't know.
Oh, okay, so this is good for, this is good for all of us to know here. So this wasn't just for acquisition of the mobile showers, because they had one they purchased on their own.
Right.
And they were running around here doing that basically off their own dime.
Correct.
And we loved what they were doing, so we added, we, we gave 150,000 for acquisition of a second one. So it wasn't just acquisition, but it was also to provide that service, provide staffing. Is that what it was?
Provide staffing, and it's also not just the mobile showers, the laundry services as well.
Yes, well, I think it's all attached.
Yes, it's all attached. 28-foot, you're correct.
It's got, it's got the showers, it's got storage for all the, the cleaning kits that they use.
And they give hygiene supplies.
Laundry, oh, it's, it's excellent. They're exceptional. Now, that, that opens up a question. Are any of these commitments going to have a balance? And what happens if there's a balance after, after completion of the project? Whatever, you know, 1 through 30. What happens with that balance?
And so for, go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez, I can answer that question. So we can move the balance to any other project that has been allocated. So if there's a shortfall in a parks project, and we have a balance in the mobile showers, we can move those funding to, to another project that's allocated.
Do we have any sort of projections right now as to if there's going to be a balance or a shortfall on any of these?
Not at this time.
Not a shortfall? Not a, not a surplus or not a projection?
Not a shortfall or a surplus. We are committing to spend all ARPA funding.
No, of course, of course, but I mean, so you guys don't have the projections yet? Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
You guys don't know yet if...
No. Go ahead.
I think we may have a better sense by the end of the year.
By the end of the year. Okay, good. All right, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
There's a second?
It's a receiving file. Does it need, does it need approval?
This is on a consent item, so it was pulled by the city manager for a presentation, so it does need a motion and a second and a vote.
It's a receiving file, but okay, move to approve.
There's, that's a second. Madam City Clerk?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move on to discussion number, item 18. Award Professional Services Agreement between the City of San Bernardino and Helping Hearts California LLC, Helping Hearts Hulan LLC for the operation of the SB Hope Campus in an amount not to exceed $2,395,075 for Phase 1 and $300,000 for Phase 2 and annually thereafter. Can we begin with the staff's presentation, please?
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Actually, before we begin, I need to provide three important updates for your awareness. First, a correction was made to the name of the proposed lead operator. So the initial agreement that was published included the name Helping Hearts California. However, the correct legal business entity name associated with our project is Helping Hearts Hulan, which operates under two registered names. So the agreement was updated to reflect the accurate entity name. Second, the staff report indicated that the SB Hope Campus would be developed in phases, with Phase 1 expected to be operational by the first quarter of 2025, 2026. This timeline was based on information that had been provided to staff by previous administration that's no longer here. In actuality, the SB Hope Campus will be constructed in its entirety, but it will operate in phases. So Phase 1 will be released with 100 beds, followed by Phase 2, which will be an additional 100 beds. So this phased approach will be explained further in today's presentation. Also, Mayor and council, you guys have received revised copies of the staff report, the resolution, and the agreement, and we also left copies in the back for members of the public. Do I have a clicker? And lastly, one more update. The PowerPoint presentation had changed from the version that was published initially. We added six additional slides, and basically they provided detailed overview of the construction timeline and the design features of SB Hope Campus, which is the city's planned 200-bed low-barrier navigation center. And this campus is just, it represents a critical turning point for the city because it's going to enable us to begin to restore and stabilize the lives of our unhoused residents by providing interim housing, recuperative care, and onsite supportive services. Today's presentation is going to cover three areas. The first being, we're going to discuss the current status and the design layout of the SB Hope Campus. We're going to introduce the recommended lead operator for your consideration and approval. And we're also going to discuss the expected operational cost and budget. I'm now going to turn this presentation over to Mr. Lynn Merrill, the Director of Public Works, who will walk us through the, the, the construction timeline, design timeline, and overall project update.
Thank you, Cassandra. Just to bring the council up to date, the, on the construction, the actual construction and design of the Navigation Center, a little bit of background. The contracts were awarded in December 2024. That was part of the push on the ARPA funding, as well as getting the Navigation Center. Initial design work commenced in January. However, there was about a two-month delay due to changes in city management and other factors that caused the delay. In March, the project was transferred to the Public Works Department. And so as a result of that, we are currently in site design, and functional elements have been confirmed. That has been shared with the Homeless Ad Hoc Subcommittee. We have nailed down the actual layout of the Navigation Center, which we'll share with you in just a moment. Architectural layout of the site is currently being completed by Mandeville. They are doing all the engineering design documents that are part of what we will be releasing in an RFP for the general construction side of it. Those have been in process. We are coordinating on a weekly basis between Mandeville, Creed, Public Works, and Cassandra's team to make sure that we are working through all of the design, administration, and operational issues necessary to bring this project forward. Currently, on the design timeline, the architectural drawings will be submitted to the state for approval by Mandeville by June 3, 2025. Because this is a modular construction, the State of California actually is the overseeing organization for modular projects. And so this is a, an important element. We've been told by Mandeville that that will probably take about two weeks. They are working on power and onsite grading plans. They have committed and told us that that will be within the next two weeks. And then facade designs are being developed, and it's our intent to present those to the, to a meeting of the Ad Hoc Subcommittee sometime in early June, so that you'll be able to see the actual facade of the building. We did go through in yesterday's project meeting and looked at some of the cladding and materials that would be used. And so we're, we're considering on that the maintainability of the structure, so that it's not materials that's going to be needed to be painted every five years or that may have wear features. We're working through all those to make sure that we have a facility that has reduced maintenance costs, as well as an attractive facility. Finally, we have a construction timeline. It is working with Mandeville. We have determined that we expect all of the documents from Mandeville that will be submitted to the city. What we will be going through is that our Public Works team will go through them once they've been provided to us. We will do a process called redlining, in which our team will look for and correct any errors that may have occurred inadvertently in the design process. We do that to try to reduce the number of change orders during the actual construction process. It's not a 100%. There's lots of uncertainties. We're working on a site that, as you all know, has a previous set of buildings that will be demolished in the next two to four weeks. And we don't know what we actually might run into once the site is cleared, and we may run into some issues, but that'll be, that'll be part of some of the uncertainty. We are expecting that we will be providing a contingency on that. So our expected release for the RFP itself is August 4, 2025. We are... We are planning a mandatory job site walk, August 19. That will be an opportunity for us to have the, have the potential general contractors actually walk the site, look at the issues, look at the plans, be able to have a conversation, and then there will be an opportunity for them to submit questions, which we will respond, respond to as appropriate. Our purpose on a 30-day bid process, what we have found is that if we shrink the bid process down, less than 30 days, we tend to not get as effective bids, we get people that maybe don't have the opportunity to bid, and so we're going to do a 30-day bid process. If we run into any issues during that, that might get extended in order to address anything that may come up during the questions or the bidders conference. But it is our intent that once the bids are open, that is going to occur on September 3, contract awarded, we are going to fast-track that staff report to the council, so that you should receive it September 17 for consideration. If all goes well, we intend to issue a notice to proceed to the successful contractor by October 15, and we're anticipating construction commencing sometime in November. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Cassandra. We do have a couple of slides here that show the actual configuration. It meets all of the intent of the RFP that we put together. I don't know if we want to get into the details, but it does have the congregant, non-congregant, recuperative care, kitchen area that'll be able to feed up to 200 people a day, three meals a day, 600 meals. It provides office space, as well as opportunities for being able to expand into training and other activities that will help to support the homeless program and help to encourage these people to be able to, you know, get their lives together a little bit. On the site itself, this is what the site looks like. We have a drive aisle, parking lot that's designed on the north side, with a drive aisle that will come around and come out onto the south side. It does meet all the fire department requirements, but it's, the layout, this has been a process, a collaborative process to get to this, and we've been very pleased with, you know, the work that we've been able to do with Cassandra's team, as well as the consultants. And with that, I'll turn it over to Cassandra.
Thank you. So, following a competitive selection process, staff is recommending Helping Hearts as the lead operator of the SB Hope Campus. Helping Hearts actually has been established since 2015. They have experience operating a low-barrier shelter and recuperative care facility. They currently manage the City of Riverside's Hulan Place, which is a multi-service campus that provides shelter, case management, vocational services, as well as housing support programs. Also, it's key to mention that Helping Hearts has expertise in addressing complex behavioral health issues, as well as substance use disorder issues, and this is going to be key for our city, because 24% of our unhoused community suffer from a mental health disorder, and 38% suffer from substance use disorder. Since 2021, Helping Hearts has served over 900 individuals, and this demonstrates a proven track record of successful outcomes. They also manage eight residential facilities in the, in the Inland Empire, and this just speaks to their expertise in the local region. They have experience with CAL-AIM invoicing, CAL-AIM billing, and this will be critical to help the city offset operating costs for the SB Hope Campus, and also support the financial sustainability. I want to point out that we do have reps in the audience from Helping Hearts who are available, should the mayor or council have any questions at the conclusion of this presentation. I mentioned that Helping Hearts has experience with CAL-AIM invoicing, and I kind of wanted to go into a little more detail with this, because everyone may not be familiar with CAL-AIM. What is CAL-AIM? So specifically, the term CAL-AIM, it stands for California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal, and it was launched by the California Department of Healthcare Services. And basically, this is a Medi-Cal reform. And so because of CAL-AIM, it has really expanded a lot of the uses that can be allowed for services. Specifically, it provides financial incentives to organizations like Helping Hearts for reimbursing services that improve health outcomes, they reduce ER visits, which is emergency room visits, and also decrease hospital visits. And this means that many of the essential services that will be offered at SB Hope Campus will qualify for reimbursement. So this slide shows us that without CAL-AIM funding, it is estimated to cost roughly $7 million to operate Phase One of SB Hope Campus, that's a 100-bed capacity, and roughly $10.6 million to operate Phase Two, that's a 200-bed full capacity. However, I'm sorry, there's a net driving me crazy. However, utilizing CAL-AIM reimbursement, we're going to reduce the city's annual contribution by over 95%. So whether it's Phase One or Phase Two, the city would contribute $300,000 a year to help operations of SB Hope Campus. This is a significant financial reduction, this is going to reduce the financial burden from the city, and this is credited with connecting with the lead operator that has experience, working with low-barrier shelters, recuperative care facilities, and that understands the billing process of CAL-AIM. I want to highlight some of the key services that are going to be provided by our lead operator. We'll have case management, housing navigation, recuperative care, and that does include short-term post-hospitalization. And some of the onsite services will include mental health services, substance use disorder counseling, assistance with documentation readiness, and that just means helping people get some of the basics, their social security, their birth certificate, their California ID. They're also going to be connecting with agencies to provide vocational training, that's job training and placement. Of course, mills, of course, security, and our lead operator is going to ensure that this is a pet-friendly environment. Remember, this is a low-barrier facility, not a no-barrier, but as a low-barrier, we're trying to remove as many impediments that would inhibit a person from coming in and accepting services. And for the record, I want to specify that when I say pets, I'm referring to cats and dogs, but we're going to do our best to accommodate. SB Hope Campus is going to have operational phases, so as I mentioned earlier, the first phase, we're going to release 100 beds, and there's a reason for that. 200 people in one place, that's a lot, and we do not want to overwhelm our operator, and we also don't want to create a place that maybe might not be that conducive to participants wanting to come in. So if we do a phased approach, and we start off with 100 beds, we're going to allow the operator to build their team up, to make sure that the service delivery model is functioning at an optimal level, providing case management, housing navigation, counseling, and all the other services that I mentioned. It's going to help identify gaps and inefficiencies, it's going to reduce the risk of overwhelming staff and systems to result in better participant outcomes, it's going to enable a staggered staff recruitment and training process, so that we can ensure that we have the workforce ready at whatever stage of this facility, and it's going to allow funding to be dispersed in stages that align with the actual needs and progress. So I know some of you have heard that with this current political climate, there could be some federal cuts to the Medi-Cal program, and just to be clear, Medi-Cal is the same as Medicaid, but in California, we call it Medi-Cal. And if there are some significant cuts to Medi-Cal, it's definitely going to affect CAL-AIM, although CAL-AIM receives both state and federal funding. But nevertheless, staff, we've communicated with Helping Hearts, and through the coordination, there is a contingency plan in place for those worst-case scenarios. And so I want to walk you through that, to let you know that moving forward, in the best of times or the worst of times, the city will be able to sustain SB Hope Campus. I want to start with Phase One, and Phase One, Year One, basically, is the 100-bed operation. So as you can see, we have startup funding in the amount of $1,644,495. Startup funding is simply that, it's the funding that's necessary for the lead operator, operator to make sure that they have everything in place, so that this campus can run efficiently and effectively. That's equipment, that's toiletries, that's furniture, that's computers, that's security, it's whatever it takes to make sure that this facility can accomplish, can incorporate all of the necessary tools and resources, and accommodate 100 people with the staffing. One time only. Then the city would also contribute its $300,000 operational cost, so the two figures combined will give us a grand total of $1,944,495. But I do want to point out that the city, we know that a lot of eyes are on us, and we know that with unforeseen costs and expenses, things can happen. So we have actually added some additional funds, call it contingency funds, but basically, we're going to add an additional $450,000 to bolster the financial stability of this program during the first year, if it's needed. So in actuality, the grand total would probably be closer to the $2,395,075. Now, I mentioned worst-case scenarios. So the best-case scenario, there's no federal cuts to Medi-Cal, everything is copesthetic, we pay what I just stated. But in the worst-case scenario, let's say there are significant cuts to Medi-Cal, in which case, instead of the city contributing $300,000 a year for annual operations, the city's cost would actually be 1.6 million, a little over 1.6 million. When you consider that we're serving 100 people, with all of the abundant services that I just listed, we're still getting a steal, should this be a worst-case scenario, I just want to point that out. And in terms of the contingency plan, I want to kind of dive in a little bit more. So again, best-case scenario, there's no cuts to Medi-Cal, it doesn't affect CAL-AIM. We know that 100% of our participants at SB Hope Campus, they're going to qualify for these Medi-Cal eligibilities, and 80% will qualify for short-term post-hospitalization. Full scope of services, recuperative care, the city pays $300,000. Let's look at the worst-case scenario, say there are significant cuts, it does affect CAL-AIM. Will this affect SB Hope Campus? It absolutely will. It's also going to hinder Helping Hearts' ability to provide a full scope of services. So what does this mean? It means that we will eliminate recuperative care and short-term post-hospitalization. But remember, the way the system works with Medi-Cal is, there are still services that we will, that the leading operator will still be able to build Medi-Cal for. So as a result, should there be drastic cuts, instead of 300,000, yes, the city would pay 1.6 million for a 100-bed capacity, and once we get to full 200 beds, instead of 300,000, the city would pay 3.2, a little over 3.2 million. And I say all that to say, whichever way this goes, because nobody here is a fortune teller, so in, in the good cases, and there's no issues, we will be able to completely fund Phase One with the 2020 PLHA dollars. In the worst-case scenarios, and there are significant cuts, we still have PLHA funds and general funds. So what I'm saying to you is, good situation, bad situation, the city has the funding, and the primary funding sources will be PLHA and general funds. It's important for me to point out that despite these funding sources in place, staff will continuously go after various funding, be it private, state, or federal dollars. If there's a way that we can bring in additional funds, so that we can maybe reallocate our PLHA dollars to other, it still has to be a homeless-related activity, we will do such. And I'm, I'm assuming people know the acronyms, I apologize, PLHA stands for Planned Local Housing Allocation. But yes, either way, we're covered, and we'll, we'll always continue to go after additional funds. In terms of the actual agreement itself, this will be a five-year contract with automatic extensions up to five successive one-year terms. This agreement can be amended in writing, and either party may give a 90-day notice of its intent not to renew. And in terms of recommendations, staff is recommending that the mayor and city council approve Helping Hearts Hulan as the lead operator for the SB Hope Campus, and authorize the appropriation of $2,395,075 for the first year of operations. And in the event of federal cuts to the Medi-Cal program, as previously discussed, staff will return to council with an amended agreement to adjust the funding figures accordingly. Again, representatives from Helping Hearts are available if you have any questions, and staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Wonderful presentation, a lot of information. Could I have Helping Hearts come up to the podium, introduce themselves? And I do have council members en queue to want to ask questions. I have Councilmember Ortiz, followed by Sanchez, followed by Ibarra, followed by Charette, and then followed by Canas. So would you, Ryan, introducing yourselves, and if you want to say a few words, and then I can have council start asking questions?
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity to present to the city council, we're very excited about this program. My name is Inez Cross, I'm the CEO of Helping Hearts of California and Helping Hearts of Hulan. We actually operate under Helping Hearts as a DBA, but our Hulan division is actually our CAL-AIM division, so that's why it gets a little confusing. We don't, we, we're currently contracted and have longstanding relationship with IEHP, as well as Molina, and so we have actually been talking to them, we have bi-weekly meetings to discuss the, everything that's going on, and they have been working with Carmen Vega, most specifically, as they're the largest provider in this particular area. So we have well-established relationships, and we also have been working with them in regards to any concerns related to CAL-AIM changes. And so just to let you know that some of the pri, there's a lot of different types of services that are covered under CAL-AIM. The priority populations and the priority services, should there be cuts, would continue to be the recuperative care, the short-term post-hospitalization, and what they call the, the housing trio, which is housing tenancy and sustaining services, housing navigation services, and then also the housing deposits. So there, they have committed to that being their primary focus if there should be reductions in their programming.
Good evening, my name is Crystal Hampton, I'm the president with Helping Hearts California and Helping Hearts Hulan, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Joshua LaVarge, co-founder of Helping Hearts California, and board member.
Thank you so much. All right, Councilmember Ortiz.
Well, this is cool. I, I think, I, I know that this was allocated and brought forward last year, but the amount of work that you and Lynn, your guys' team, have done in the last three months is really what we're seeing. And so, kudos to you guys, because this is, this is great. I am concerned greatly by the financial status of this, because we do know that in tumultuous times, as, as we look at everything economically, politically, where we're going to be, and I, what I see in, in this moment is, we've got a great foundation, we've got a good plan, but why are we doing this alone? And why are we carrying the burden of, of just being this, this navigation center in the city of San Bernardino, throughout the county, and way to the west of us, our neighbors in Fontana, have been able to secure a regional partnership with complete funding from the county of San Bernardino for the exact same effort? And so I know one of the, the larger settlements is that people come from other cities to our city, dumped or not dumped, whatever, but we bear that burden. And as we've seen in our numbers, our population has gone up while the county has dwindled. And so I appreciate everything that you guys can do, but you, and we can only do so much. And so is there an opportunity for us to break into the discussion to have, because I know Redlands is killing it for them, but to talk with Highland, and Rialto, and Bloomington, and, and Grand, and talk about financially helping support this effort for what we know is going to be the carryover? And I, I think about it this way, and I want to use an analogy in the, and take it for what it is, not exact, the animal shelter. Okay? We had always been taking in other people's extras, with never gaining any financial benefit. Now, we entered into contracts, without the infrastructure, it's hitting us, but we have an opportunity right now, before we lay into collectively bringing people in, to have that investment in this infrastructure from the surrounding cities, if that's something that this council and ourselves are able to take on. So that, that would be something I would like us to look into if possible. And then I'll reserve the rest for...
Yeah, so good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. If we get direction from the council to begin to have conversations with partnerships, especially the county and other agencies, we can do that. We have some time. As Public Works Director Merrill said, we'll know approximately September-ish what the final cost is going to be, approximately of the, of the NAV Center, and we can begin prior to that, with your concurrence, begin to have some conversations. Nothing in concrete, everything would have to come back to the city council for, for formal, if there's anything formal put together, but we, we'll, we'll take that direction if it comes to the city council.
Can, can that be added to the recommendation of the motion? Would be also to direct staff to come back? Because then I would make a motion to approve. I know there's other questions and comments, but I would like to add that if that's possible, Chair. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Councilmember Ibarra.
I know my colleague to my right, Canas, has talked about this before, and so if you'd like to make a motion with adding, doing, making a concerted effort to, to bring together a regional partnership for this, I will second that motion.
There is already a motion for that? I can ask for a second?
There is a motion?
Yes. Okay, there's a second. Councilmember Ibarra.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for all the work you're doing. I applaud the work you're, you know, trying to get it up and going. But I'm seeing here, I went to the website for Helping Hearts. I see you have several home locations. Can you go down the list and tell us how many homes you have in each city? Because I see Colton, Fontana, Moskoy, Ontario, Rialto, San Bernardino, and Victorville, that you already have homes in those cities that you're helping families with. Do you know how many homes you need, or how many people are being serviced per year?
Those are social rehabilitation, licensed social rehabilitation, so they're not families, they're individuals. We've got contract and been contracted with the San Bernardino County Department of Behavioral Health for a decade, and we're in the process of just been successful for another five-year contract. So we, there, we serve the Tier Three, the most seriously mentally ill. 95% of our members are conserved, we're able to get people out of Arrowhead and other hospitals and keep them out of a lockdown situation, but they get 24-hour supervision and guidance, but they also get treatment. Most of the folks we work with are schizophrenic in that capacity.
Okay, and approximately how many?
So that would be 64 beds total.
64 beds?
So, and, and so that's, depending on the individual, I mean, for sure, 64 people every year.
Okay. And the contract that staff is proposing here is for 2.3 million, how much staff are you considering for that amount that we're paying?
Well, that would be the scaled-down version, if worst-case scenario, the 2.375, most of that is startup cost, and about 200,000 of that is actually the commercial kitchen, that includes all the furniture and so forth. So the only actual part related to staffing would be 300,000. And then based on the scope of the project, we've got Phase One and Phase Two, so we've got, I'd have to look at the numbers exactly, but it was, I believe, 42 people for Phase One, and then in addition, for 42 staff people, and then an additional 32 for Phase Two. Phase One has some administrative staff that would be servicing both Phase One and Phase Two.
Okay, so I'm trying to see what the, maybe we can talk about it offline later with staff, but is this going to be like a full-time kind of care that you're offering when that navigation center gets put up, or, or certain business hours only?
No, 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 it's 24/7.
24/7?
Yeah, it's, and it's very important for us, you know, we work with, obviously, on the Hewlin side, we've also been operating in Arizona since 2007, so we have a lot of experience working with very vulnerable adults. And so it's very important to us to make sure that, you know, there's, there's not a convenient time, you know, you don't want to turn people away. So we have certain positions that are 24/7, and then we, we have some administrative staff that's not 24/7. But the other thing I would like to just bring to your attention is, we have also been working very hard with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department in identifying high utilizers, and we've got about an 80% success rate. And for example, these individuals, it's a voluntary program, but these individuals, there were 118 of them, and, and though, they account for over 7,000 jail days for low-level, you know, petty crimes, trespassing, and, you know, disorderly conduct and so forth. So, you know, we've been able to keep people from that cycle of going to and from jail, in and out, in and out, and just being pushed out, and giving people an opportunity. So we've had some really high success rates with individuals who typically, the cycle's broken, and we're doing something to, trying to do things differently to fix it, and had some very good outcomes.
Okay, and I'm not sure, also, will you be working with other nonprofits in the area for getting referrals into the Hope Campus, or will you be doing on your own with Salvation Army? I'm trying to see how all this is going to connect later on, because I know we have, we have the highest number of unhoused in our city. The number keeps growing. And, and like my colleague from the Seventh Ward mentioned, other cities are, are doing even better than us, having more support from the county. And I know a lot of the unhoused in our city are from all over the county, even outside the county. And so I want to make sure that we are addressing the unhoused situation in our city, specifically in our city with our residents, that maybe that we're out of luck, whatever, just getting back into society. But I just, I don't want this to, you know, be used by other outside jurisdictions and trying like, oh, well, we have a contract with Helping Hearts, we're gonna, we need somebody to go into that facility from.
Councilmember Ibarra, I'll interject here, so yeah, we are definitely prioritizing our city's residents. And to be clear, in order to actually come to SB Hope Campus, they have to be homeless certified. And who's doing homeless certification? It's our city's outreach team and our city's peace team. So we will vet the individuals that come in. So prioritization absolutely to our residents.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Charette, followed by Councilmember Canas.
Yeah, I only have one quick question, and it has to do with contingency plan. I think this is for you, Cassandra, maybe. Why, under best-case scenario, our contribution does not double when it goes to 200 beds, but under the worst-case scenario, our contribution not only goes way up, low overall, and we get that that's a good buy, but it doubles? And it doesn't in the other scenario, but why does it double there?
So to, I guess the simplest way to answer that is, the revenue that's coming in from CalAim, when we get more people, that's more revenue. And so as a result, what you're seeing is Helping Hearts is not in no way trying to gouge the city. They are giving us the lowest of the low costs. Don't get me wrong, there's a lot of income that's coming in, and they do have to offset their costs, but they're making it to the point where even though we have doubled the amount of people with the revenue that's coming in, we're still going to reap the greatest benefit by keeping our amount the same. The reason why it changes for the worst-case scenario is because a lot of the services that you normally would be able to bill or get reimbursement for, they're going to be cut off. So we won't be able to reimburse for as many services in the worst-case scenario, whereas in the best-case scenario, there's a revenue stream. And I know I explained that terribly, and maybe Helping Hearts can give you a better explanation, but it's just more revenue, more people, greater benefit for the city. Maybe somebody in Helping Hearts can elaborate a little further as to what, if you understood the councilmember's question?
Yes, well, and again, we have, we have some scalable and flexible kinds of services as well. So for example, we don't want, we're looking at having a certain number of recuperative care beds, and we're also having a certain number of what we call flex beds, which can be used for crossover. But if recuperative care is a much more expensive process and, and program than some of the other services. So if CalAim funding were to go away, that comprehensiveness, it would go back to more of a shelter style rather than, than the complete care. In question to Phase One versus Phase Two, as I said earlier, we have some administrative staff that are going to be having to come on at Phase One that will also be serving Phase Two. So there's a bit of a disproportionate administrative burden for, for example, a site administrator and for, for cook and, you know, certain things that are going to be the same cost, whether it's, it's 100 beds or 200 beds.
Well, I understand that, but that doesn't really answer the question, why it doubles? Because i- if you can not double it on the, on the best-case scenario, you don't have to double it there, but you do have to double it there. So you'd still be getting some economy of scale, wouldn't you, even under worst-case scenario, where some of the, the costs are there, whether you're doing 100 beds or 200 beds? So I, I still don't quite, can't reconcile the doubling, albeit, I'm not complaining. But I do want to go after the county and get more money from them.
And, and again, the scalability and the types of services, you know, we're making the assumption that if something's going to happen, it's going to happen in 2027 or later, based on the waiver renewal and the timing of what could happen. But again, that turns into also what's the state covering versus what the federal cover is? So we're looking at, we're looking at, as far as, why is it double instead of 230? I, I, that was basically simple math, I believe, as far as...
Well, maybe it won't double, then.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe these are estimates.
They are.
These are estimates, and these are maybe, hopefully, conservative estimates, and, and when all is said and done, even under the worst-case scenario, it may not double. I, you know, I, that's all I can make sense of. So I, I, we need this done, but we do, I go along with all my colleagues that the city of San Bernardino, within, in the region, we're hit the hardest, and we're not getting the best bang for our buck from our county taxpayers, and we've just got to be continuing to work hard to try to find other resources. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
And Councilmember Charette, I just wanted to follow up, to be clear, the population itself is doubling. So the reason why you see 1.6 is because it's only serving 100 people. So in a sense, yeah, that number is essentially doubling because Phase Two would be an additional 100 people, that's 200. In the savings portion, in the best-case, best-case scenario, we close our eyes and say, and say, "Thank you."
So let's get the best-case scenario going right away.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Canas, followed by Councilmember Ortiz.
Well, first, I want to say thank you, Ms. Circe. You really are a breath of fresh air. You know, homelessness is the number-one problem in the city of San Bernardino. It's such a pervasive issue, and you bring such a wealth of knowledge and expertise. And so I just really want to say thank you to you, all of our team, our Public Works team, that worked really hard to really push this forward and get this going. So thank you again. You made a comment in regards to, from Phase One to Phase Two in worst-case scenario, that the actual care might change and move from like a more of a recuperative care model to more of a shelter model. So if that is the case, what's the difference with outcomes?
The outcomes, you know, honestly, I can't, I can't tell you exactly what those outcomes would be, because we typically focus on treatment-based and the more, the more broad focus. So, you know, we, we work very creatively, we have a lot of programs in effect. What we could still incorporate, because our day programming, our activities, and making sure that people have positive things to do with their days and our, you know, those, those permeate and would still exist. We also work very closely with different universities for, for not just employees, but we also have a large intern program, and so we would be able to help provide some crossover there as well. But, you know, I can't tell you exactly what worst-case scenario is going to look like, because I don't know the scope of what the state, if it would just be reducing the number of people who are Medi-Cal eligible versus reducing the program or a combination of both. And that's a TPD for all of us.
Councilmember Canas, I just wanted to kind of add to that. The metrics would change in the sense that we wouldn't have the recuperative care and short-term post-hospitalization, but the core essential services to help a person stabilize would remain. So you're still having case management, you're still having housing navigation, you're still dealing with mental and substance abuse, you're still dealing with vocational services. So in the end, the lead operator is still focused on helping a person exit out of homelessness and stabilize into housing. But to your point, we're kind of just in our mind projecting for what could be the worst, but it's like, we don't have a globe, so we don't know what this is going to look like, but we can say, we can still provide the core essential services that a person needs to exit out of homelessness.
No, and I get that. And of course, there's so much uncertainty. No one, like you said, has a crystal ball, and can we truly predict what really is going to happen, especially with this new administration and the ever-changing priorities? So I totally understand that. It is just, we are investing a significant amount of our money, and there's ongoing operational expenses. City manager, we've talked quite heavily in regards to the regional housing approach. It's something I had been researching for quite some time, well before I even came to the seat here as a city council. And that is my overall concern, is really the financial sustainability of our center. Homelessness, as pervasive as it is and as widespread as it is, it isn't typical that municipalities have a burden, especially financially, to have to deal with something so cumbersome. And I sincerely appreciate, we have a balanced budget, but we do have to understand, we got there by cutting every single department by 5%. We're not financially flesh, and we do not know what the future holds, not for CalAim, but just in, in general. I just came from a legislative update where CSU systems are cutting their budgets by 375 million. I mean, the impacts of what's going on is, it really is widespread as well. So I do want to be proactive. I do sincerely support what Councilmember Ortiz has brought forward. I do want to really look forward to a regional housing model that we do implement to really be proactive. I don't want us to wait for the worst-case scenario. I want us to plan to be able to fulfill the services that we initially started off proposing. I would like to be able to create structures where we don't have to sacrifice anything. If we really look into that regional models, it's, you know, a cost sharing with the other cities. I know Mayor Warren in Fontana, phenomenal, she and her leadership coalesced her council, and I mean, within months, they have been able to do a West End Regional Navigation Center that is going to be breaking ground quite soon. And I do think, you know, they have a model that they've created, they are currently working with the county. It is something that we right here in the city of San Bernardino can replicate. So I, again, I support that motion, and I look forward to city staff being able to be proactive and taking into consideration just the future of that operational consideration of that, the navigation center. I did also want to ask, I know there were some dates up there as far as timelines, if we could just like, best-case scenario, when do we actually open doors? Not break ground, photo ops, I don't care about any of that. When do we actually get to effectively move people off the streets and into that navigation center?
We're gonna, we're gonna let the director of Public Works speak on that. I do know that construction is supposed to start in November 2025. One of the benefits of us having modular construction versus, versus your typical brick and mortar is that our units are being built off-site, so that's going to save us some costs on prevailing wage, but it's also going to allow the construction to move at a faster pace, because they're literally taking these steel frames, and I don't want to take any light away, because I'm not the expert on this at all, but I do happen to know a little bit about modular. They're going to build this off-site, and then they will bring it to the location, and almost connect these things like Lego blocks, so it's a much faster process. But outside of that, I'll let Director Lynn Merrill speak.
Currently, the schedule right now is looking at by September or October of next year that we will be completed with the project.
So 2026?
2026.
Oh, wow.
The, the challenges really are, are not in the modular construction, per se. The challenges are in the site preparation. One of the reasons why we need to get the engineering plans and the other plans from Mandeville is that that serves as the basis for when these modulators come in. They have to be able to have all of their utility hookups, their water, everything has to be placed so that when they drop them down, they lock into place. And so a lot of that is going to be the general construction that has to go on. In addition, there's going to be site clearing, there's water quality management plans that have to be developed as part of the whole site. And so there's a lot of engineering and site preparation that goes into this. If it was just simply being able to bring the modulators in, it'd be a piece of cake, but you've got to get the site, and you've got to make sure, and that's why we're waiting for Mandeville to prepare all the engineering plans, the electrical utilities and all of that.
Okay, so we're more than 12 months out from being able to, again, effectively get people off of the streets of the city of San Bernardino.
Yes.
Okay. To that point, this is great, and I know this is your jam, so I know that it's going to happen, which I'm extremely happy about, I am. My concern is the interim. You know, over a year, that's, that's a long time, and we are grappling with a very serious issue in our city right now. Homelessness is a crisis. Again, it's the number-one issue of constituents, not just isolated to the fifth, I think we can all say across the city, it's citywide. I would like to think of some other things that we can explore. I know that we recently approved items for hotel vouchers. We have Salvation Army, you know, providing...
Rapid rehousing.
I'm sorry?
We have the rapid rehousing.
Yes, the rapid rehousing, so I know that we do have that. I would like to think, is there anything more? And I bring this up because we were recently at the city-county conference, Councilman Sanchez and I, and we had a great conversation with the county, and speaking about partnerships. We have quite a few shelters already in the city of San Bernardino. We have Pacific Village, we have Lutheran, and they are currently purchasing a property in our city as well. Is there an opportunity to partner with, with the county so that we can, you know, have something more immediate in addition to the rapid rehousing? So that we can, again, the goal is to effectively get people off of the streets.
And you know what? I love that concept, and those are conversations that we have had many times. Yes, we do have Pacific... had many times. Yes, we do have Pacific Village just right in our back door, but we do not have direct access to that facility.
Exactly. That's the point.
We have to go through a referral process like anybody else, and it's long and daunting. I am going to be honest with you, and I'm saying this because I had this friend conversation earlier this week with the county. Yeah, there's a lot of shelter beds that's reported, but try accessing them. The reason why the city created this interim shelter program, and don't get me wrong, I know it's not perfect, but it at least allows people to get off this patch of dirt and come into a safe place where they can have a shower, a hot mill, and try to recover. And the reason why we moved forward with three motels is because we could not access. Everything is so siloed here, and if you do not have direct relationships with the operators of these facilities, forget about getting a bed. So, there needs to be room for discussion and improved coordination, and I definitely like where you're going. And there are some further conversations that definitely the staff and the city manager are going to have with the county because this is something that, you're echoing something that's already been mentioned. And it is possible, it is doable. Other counties have done it, and it's definitely something that we ourselves can move forward on. And so, these are discussions that will continue. But, to be honest with you, Councilmember, right now, I'm aware of 422 beds just in our city, and a lot of these organizations do not take direct funding from the state or federal government. So, there's just certain reporting that they don't have to do. And-
And they want us to fund them.
And anytime you call, most of the time, probably 95% of the time, there are no beds available, and that's just a hard fact.
That's my point. So, thank you for elaborating on that because that's exactly my point, is there are beds that we can't access in our own city. That's a problem for me. So, that's why I would like, sorry, the Nats, I would like for there to be an actual partnership, something solidified, something that is black and white, something contractual, so that we have access. Waiting till October 2026, again, this is a wonderful project. I commend you guys wholeheartedly and support it. I just want to kind of fill in that gap for that interim period of time because, again, it is a huge issue. You drive through these city streets, which you guys all do, it is bad, and we do have to kind of think a little bit outside the box and fill in that gap. I think that would be a very meaningful collaboration that we could kind of do in addition to the navigation center.
I'd like to add one more point that I forgot to mention. One of the conversations with the county that was very productive is the fact that they're where the city is trying to establish its own software, where we do not have to become reliant upon the county's HMIS system. But in having that software, it's only effective if we know where the beds are. And so, the county did agree to share that information with the city so that as we move this software forward, we can go to the system and see what organization has a bed readily available for the city, for the PD, for any organization that's trying to provide services. I'm talking about internal city organizations. So, that is a plus that the county has agreed to work with us on. Show us where the beds are so that we can utilize them.
See, I knew you were on it. That's also a really great point, and why I do love the regional approach because then there's an information-sharing aspect that coincides with it too. So, thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Canas, if I can just reiterate what Cassandra mentioned. We have bi-weekly meetings with the county, and they focus solely on homelessness and what we can do to further our partnership with the county. We absolutely will bring up what you just mentioned about how we can utilize that transitional period to see what we can do to work with them specifically or other nonprofits in the area to find out how we get access to those beds. Because I know it's frustrating for the team. We have people that want services, but they're just not readily available to us. And so, that's something we can absolutely work on.
No, I appreciate that. You know, the more that we can actually control, to your point, Ms. Cersei, I think the better off we'll be, and we'll be able to really effectively address this issue in our city. So, thank you.
I'd like to add one, one other thing, Councilmember. One of the things that we are actually looking at is, in construction, you usually have liquidated damages when a contractor fails to perform. But there is the opposite side of the coin, which is incentives that can be given to speed up the construction. We're actually having discussions about how we might be able to incorporate those to speed this process up a little bit with the general contractor.
Are they financial incentives?
They, they are financial. They were used, the state used them during the earthquakes to speed up some of the construction, reconstruction of some of the freeway crossings. It is a tool that we are looking at. We don't know if we're going to incorporate it, but if there's a way that we can speed this up to get the delivery of the, of the project sooner, we're looking at all of those aspects.
Do you have an estimate of what those financial incentives would be?
I do not.
Would those come back to the council? Should you?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
Great, great stuff. So, in the event of worst-case scenario, what is the projected timeframe that we would have in essence? Are we talking like the, a new fiscal budget in 2027, 26? Like, when are we going to project worst-case?
So, the Cal, and I'm sorry, I know they can speak better than this, but the CalAim waiver is in place till December 30th, 2026?
Okay.
Yeah. So, we know that for the next year, CalAim is in place, this program will continue to move forward. As Inez had mentioned, we probably will not really have a significant impact, should there be cuts to the federal government, till 2027, so.
But that would only be our first year of operation. So, we would only be able to even have a good-case scenario for one year. Okay. So, and, and this is why I appreciate from hearing what, just being honest about access, and I think Councilwoman Canas has hit on some good points. And this is why I appreciate my colleagues creating, supporting the creation of our own ad hoc homeless committee. Because one of the benefits of the COC is that they bring these vendors, and they present how many beds they have available to what population. And so, I hope as we create our ad hoc, and I know I got to get back to you, City Manager, is that we incorporate that. Because how many of these nonprofits that do not want to provide us access are we giving money to? I know you said they're not state-federal, so none of them?
None, and they want some.
Okay.
None from us.
I think this is what's extremely important, is if you're in the city and you're not a good partner with the city, then I don't know, you know, at this point, what we're doing here. You did mention a statistic, and so, I don't know if there was overlay or these were two separate, but I believe you said, like, roughly 24% is mentally ill, 34% drug-addicted?
38% for substance use, and that's correct. That's coming from our 2,025-point-in-time count numbers.
So, that's almost about 50% of the, of the current population, depending on some overlap?
Correct.
And so, I know that this, which, when I heard about your, your homes is fantastic because true, true to point is, what we're building is only for people that are capable of living within four walls. And roughly 50%, if not more, and we're being conservative, really cannot be sustained in this type of housing. And that's why what Councilwoman Canas brought forward, to have that overlay discussion of what we do in the interim, is if we do become this regional partner, is there also for us to take advantage of behavioral health? And I know VARP, Veterans Drug Assistance, who's doing the two, the Waterman Corridor, your guys' awesome stuff that you're doing, gives us an opportunity to really hit the underlying issue, which is not a housing issue, it is a drug and alcohol and mental illness problem that's at the subset of, of our things. So, if we free up money, can we then potentially, as a body, have this discussion of creating these facilities that can be funded and used to treat more than half of the population on the streets? Is that something that's a viable option?
Yeah, that's correct.
I love that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council. Excellent questions and comments, those, a lot, a lot of which I had questions up to, but I do have some more questions. On Slide 2, it mentions men and women for the interim housing. Does this also include families with children? I always think about our children.
Unfortunately, not. And the reason why is because we only had two and a half acres, and in this condensed space, I don't care the best security, you're putting yourself in liability when you start dealing with children. So, we're just strictly going to be with adult men and adult women.
So, what happens to families with homeless, that has children and are experiencing homelessness?
Correct. So, the city, we're not doing this alone. We're still continuing to partner with other agencies that provide services for families. And just to give you an example, you know, we have a large number of individuals who are in the TAY community, ages 18 to 24. Okay, if they come to our doors and they need help and assistance, absolutely, we're going to open the doors. But that next morning, we're expecting our case managers to reach out to those agencies that specialize in that demographic. Not saying that, you know, we don't want to provide services, but we know there's agencies out there that can do a better job, and they specialize in that group. So, the same is true for families. This will not necessarily be a safe place for people with small children. Instead, we will continue to work with organizations that provide, that provide those services, be it in funding or in other in-kind donations, but it won't be appropriate for this location.
Are there facilities in our city that serve homeless, you know, families with children?
Correct. There's, there's several, yes.
Okay, great. So, then there will be a partnership there to make sure our children are safe as well. Okay. Thank you. And thank you for addressing the capacity. That was my biggest concern because I know we had an operator where the capacity was a huge issue. And so, for you to mention, you mentioned 42, correct? And, and you also mentioned IHP and Molina, which is a huge, two huge organizations. So, that is very, very, very exciting, and thank you. I also want to mention, you know, I think you, Council, for mentioning the regional approach as well as the partnership with the county. But I also don't want us to also really reach out to our subcommittee member, James Romos, because the homeless youth, and also the efforts that he's putting with the, you know, his push to lead the, suddenly build 349, to really address the mental health illness in the unhoused population. Make sure that he's in the loop because this matters to him and his team and his, and, and just to make sure that if there's anything that he can help, he would, I know that he would be willing to make sure that we're, we're, you know, assisted. So, please make sure that their office is in, in the loop of this whole process. And I think that's about it. We do have a motion by Councilmember Ortiz, and a second by Councilmember Sanchez. Any further comments? Seeing none, please call for the votes or digital vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Helping Heart. Congratulations.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to just give a shout out. It takes a village to put something like this together. I want to thank Cassandra, Trina, Gabby, the Peace Team, Public Works, combined. They do a fantastic job and are working hard for our communities. I want to thank them.
Yes. Big round of applause to all of our staff as well. Thank you so much for your dedication. We will now move on to items to be considered for future meetings. Item number 19, review and provide direction on the development of the city's 2024, '25, and 2025, '26 Legislative Platform to Guide Advocacy Efforts at the State and Federal Levels. Councilmember Canas?
Yeah, and without going into much detail, I really just wanted to help facilitate a really collaborative discussion amongst the council. I recently had the opportunity to go to Sacramento, which was a really great experience. But I just want to make sure that when, you know, we're being represented out there by our federal and state lobbyists, even for ourselves, as I went representing the city of San Bernardino, that we make sure that we really are all on the same page. Whenever we're going up there, all of the council knows the why and the what. I also was recently reached out, coincidentally, by a childhood friend on social media, asking why we oppose a certain bill. And I was a little bit embarrassed because I had no idea what they were talking about. So, being able to also have a set process in regards to how the council is updated in regards to bills that we either support or oppose, especially before that action actually occurs, so that we can actually give our sentiments in regards to, do we want to oppose it or support it? I think that would be very useful. And again, this is really just to facilitate the discussion on how we would like to develop an actual process. We do pay individuals, both federal and state, to act on our behalf, but if we're not giving them any information on how to do so, you know. So, that's what this is about.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Councilmember, I think you should.
Thank you. There's a second?
You should make the motion. She did it. Oh, all right.
Your motion, Councilmember Sanchez, and second by Councilmember Barra.
I'm sorry, can I get the, who made the motion?
Councilmember Sanchez. Oh.
I want Kim to do it. I'm, I'm, I'm on my motion. Okay, so you-
I, I motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Canas, motion, seconded by Councilmember Barra.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, moving on to item 20, Consider Approval of the Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Councilmember Sanchez?
Move to approve.
There's a motion, second. Please vote on the digital screen.
The motion passes 6 to 1 with Councilmember Ortiz voting in opposition.
Thank you. Moving on to Mayor and City Council Updates. Councilmember Barra?
Yes, recently attended the Muscopiabi Neighborhood Association meeting where it was a nice meeting because Ms. Linware was recognized for all her years and volunteerism in our city. So, thank you for all, Council, you know, for giving her an award for all the services she's done for our city. It was really heartwarming because she's the reason I'm here. Whether she knows it or not, she was one of those community members that really loved and cared the city, got me into Neighborhood Association Council after being in Neighborhood Watch, block captain myself. And that's how I got to get my, my word out there of beautifying our city. That's, because she, ever since she was a child or a young person in our city, she would walk around her neighborhood and pick up trash on her own in a bucket. She would tell us the story. So, it was a very touching meeting. Linware, just know that I love you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do for the city of San Bernardino. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Canas?
Thank you. I wanted to recognize Tatiana Eden Ochoa from Cajon High School, my alma mater. She achieved the number-one national student ranking for the National Speech and Debate Association. I also want to recognize Coach Embriani, who has been at Cajon High School probably before I was even there. That's how long Coach Embriani has been with Cajon. He was just named the Athletic Director of the Year by California State Athletics and Directors Association. So, congrats to Coach Embriani. I will be hosting my now second, Fifth Ward Community Meeting. That will be on June 5th at 6:00 PM at Los Tacos Locos. I also want to give a huge thank you to Ernesto Salinas. As a resident, I have always advocated for one of the local parks that I took my babies to ever since they were little. Now, my son is 12 years old, so that's how long I've been advocating for updates and repairs to this park. Thank you so much, Ernesto, because you heard me, you heard the community. Finally, after two years of being closed, because of all the dilapidation at Tall Miner Park, it is now finally going to receive the much-needed repairs and be reopened in time for summer 2025. I cannot say thank you enough. Also, for years, I have been reporting the Chestnut Trail and getting so much flack. Now that I've entered into this seat, I get to be responsible and accountable for all those things. Ernesto heard those cries as well and complaints, and crews went out and cleaned up. I walked Saturday morning and was just so pleased at the condition of Chestnut Trail. I know we still have some things to do. We're going to be organizing a community cleanup for Chestnut Trail to accomplish the remainder of fixing the fence, painting some of the benches, removing some of the graffiti. But just, I can't, again, I can't say thank you enough. It means a lot to the community. It's something you would think that, you know, is small, it's just a local park. But our local parks really do serve our community in so many meaningful ways. So, again, thank you. All right.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
I want to commend staff and our Police Department, Public Works, for a major cleanup that happened in the historic West Side neighborhoods, the western end of my district, the First Ward. There were 81 encampments cleaned. 140 people were at these encampments. 76 of them accepted help, which is 54%, and there were 58 tons of trash removed. That is equivalent to 30 passenger vehicles. You know, people talk metric tons, they don't know what that is. That is equivalent to 30 passenger vehicles of trash that was picked up from that park. And that was an incredible undertaking. The park looks much significantly, significantly better. It's something, it's a public facility that the community can now, can now take full advantage of again. And that isn't it. There are improvements on the calendar for that park, and they will be coming at a, at a slow but consistent pace. But, back to the homeless encampment cleanups, there are more places in the First Ward that will need cleaning up. And I am well aware of those, and I am working closely with staff to address those campsites that continue to bring down our quality of life. So, know that I am working hard. quality of life. So, know that I'm working hard to get those cleaned up, and I'm looking forward to the day when I can say that the last major encampment in the first ward has been cleaned up. And I think with the way staff is working, I think that, that date will be sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you. Sue, attended the CSUSB Legislative Briefing with the City Manager and our Legislative Rep. Louis Marquez. And this was such a good opportunity, as you guys have talked about the potential, the budget cuts, best case, worst case, best case became 3% for Cal State versus an anticipated 7. And I bring this up because what our investment into our city is a direct correlation to the type, to the community of which we serve. And we have two major schools. We have Cal State San Bernardino, and we have Valley College. And it is absolutely important for us, and in the conversations we had, which was awesome, and Assembly Member Ramos's team was there, that we have to do more and we have to do better. Because there is no reason that our people should be leaving our city. And we need to make sure that we are driving the ties. I know we have the School of Entrepreneurship, but where is our internship programs? Where are, are we making sure that we're recruiting the best talent? The County of San Bernardino is the largest employer in the city of San Bernardino, and they have 20,000 potential openings. And so, we just have to be more mindful of that. And that was a great, it was a great opportunity, you know, plus that's where I work. And so, seeing, living and working in our city with the same amount of students that keep wanting to stay here. They really, really want it to remain in their home. There's no greater joy than being in, in your space to do that. And so, I want us to continue those relationships, keep going with that. Because that's, that's, that was my pathway to where I'm at, and I'm so grateful to Cal State. Additionally, Delman Heights is continuing their food pantry. So, I know food scarcity is a thing. I know what tariffs and, you know, threats of economic disadvantage. So, if you can, True Light Community Church is holding that on Wednesdays at 4:00 PM. Additionally, the mayor and I, and I'll let her do her part, attended the ribbon cutting of Stronger Together Now, which is a community space right over here next to Viva La Bova. Absolutely beautiful. It's awesome that people are collectively working together. And I also attended the ICSC Convention in Las Vegas. It was extremely interesting to be an elected official and hear people's feedback on our city and their potential desire to develop. One common theme that I want to bring back to everybody is that they're watching. And they, the people that don't, that, that want to come here have greater expectations for us. And so, it's really important that we step outside of what we see because the reality is, is not as pretty as, as compared. And so, I think this is a great opportunity for us, especially, City Manager, I wanted to let you know, one thing that developers have told me is we must solidify a general plan and a specific plan before they are even willing to consider coming here. No one's going to do the work to get through a process of planning only to be denied, only to be kicked out. And so, I really want to make sure that that becomes, I know council's made that a goal priority, but that we really stick to that. Because that is the future of the city of San Bernardino, and we are 20 years out of date on our general plan. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Potem?
Thank you. I don't, I don't have any announcements, but I guess I'll take the opportunity to say thank you to our Public Works Department for all the great work that you, you do throughout the city, and for an opportunity to, to recognize you during National Public Works Week as well, Ernesto. You've been, really been doing some great work, especially around Colony Park and Lidle Creek Park. And so, I just wanted to personally say thank you to you and to all the crew, the staff, and everybody else above, below, and everybody that's participated in helping, you know, clean up those parks and get some stuff going in there and in the maintenance and the projects and everything else that goes on in there. So, greatly appreciate all our Public Works employees as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. No, no updates, but just a deep thank you to staff, like all the work that you guys do, like every week, every month, and how you guys keep the city going. Like, we really appreciate it, honestly. And then, Public Works, the big shout out to you guys, not only because it's your week, but, but we, we get to see physically like the, the changes that happen around in the city. And we, we owe it to you guys, the boots on the ground. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sherrett?
Thank you, Mayor. And my two colleagues to the right said exactly what I was going to say. I don't really have any updates, but it doesn't go without notice to the entire staff, not only Public Works during Public Works Week, but the entire staff of the city of San Bernardino. We've got a real challenge in this community, and I know our staff is out there working very hard, and I don't know that we say thank you enough. So, so just thank you to everybody from the lowest to the highest. And I appreciate the work that everybody does every day. And I want to just remind everybody again that this is Memorial Day weekend and that we will be having an event here, I believe, Ernesto, it's right out in front here, right out in front at 9:00 AM. It should be about an hour, hour and a half long. I've always participated in it whenever I'm in town and can, and I do plan on being there. We certainly want to recommend, I mean, remember our, our fallen and, and not look at Memorial Day as my former colleague, Alexander, said, not just look at it as a, a day off from work or a holiday, but that it's, it really has some real meaning. So, please join us 9:00 out in front of Feldham Library, Library for our, our little ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, for my update, I also did attend the City-City Conference at Lake Eyrehead where we got to get some valuable legislative updates on key policies impacting local governments. Also appreciate the insightful economic forecast by Chris Thornburg, which highlight important trends and opportunities for the Inland Empire. And these types of events, when we come together as a region, it really strengthened all of our efforts as a regional County of San Bernardino. On May 10th, 2025, I also attended the SB City Art Night. My kids had a lot of fun. They got to paint a whole bunch of art. I also attended the Project Rebound graduation at Cal State San Bernardino. I got to give a shout out to Cal State. Thank you for having a program such as this, because it is a transformative program at Cal State San Bernardino that opens doors to higher education for just as involved individuals. And I have to tell you, there were so many smiles in that room, and they were so encouraged about their future. I also attended the SBCTA, also known as San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, General Policy Committee meeting on May 14th. On May 15th, I attended the SBCTA Board Meeting, the San Bernardino Council-Governments Ad Hoc Meeting, and the ribbon cutting ceremony for Stronger Together with Councilmember Ortiz, the Pulse. Thank you to Janelle and Kai for creating a beautiful community space. Thank you to the artists, Arturo Ariano, for your beautiful, inspiring art that fills the Pulse with such amazing, amazing energy, not just there, but throughout the city. So, thank you. On May 16th, I visited, visited the San Bernardino Air Chamber of Commerce Leadership Tour at San Bernardino Airport. Thank you, Judy Penman, for the invite and was able to speak to those who are involved at the leadership program. Visited the Bing Wong Elementary Schools Multicultural Celebration and the grand opening of the Clay Counseling Services here in downtown, which provides mental health and wellness services in our community. I also attended the fire station grand opening. Wow, wow, wow. If you haven't been there, oh my goodness, you should check it out. It is beautiful in the Del Rosso neighborhood, very transformative for our community and really making sure that our, our community is safe. I also, later that same day, I had the honor to attend the funeral service for Betty Dean Anderson, a trailblazing leader, dedicated public servant, and beloved member of our San Bernardino community. Her legacy of service, education, and empowerment will continue to inspire generations. She is, she was the first black councilwoman in the city of San Bernardino. So, wow, amazing. I want to extend my deepest condolences to her daughter, Councilmember Lynn Kennedy of Rancho Cucamonga, and her family. She is also the president of the League of California Cities, and again, just like her mother, a trailblazer. This, I also attended, last night, again, thank you, Barbara Sky, within Vertamont Neighborhood Association for putting together a meeting and inviting me as a guest speaker. Was able to speak to residents about the roles of mayor and council, and also updates in our city. And so, it was nice to see other councilmembers there present too. So, thank you, Barbara Sky, for putting that together. The residents were very appreciative of the information provided, and they expressed that. This morning, I attended the English as Second Language and Citizenship Graduation at Inland Center Career Education Center with Councilmember Mara Flores. As a daughter refugee immigrant, this really is close to myself and also to Councilmember Flores. It was deeply meaningful for me to join the graduates because I know my parents and my sister became US citizens here in San Bernardino as well. And, and as someone who, English is a second language, it's, it's really, really important. So, thank you for the invite. I also want to give a shout out to the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander community in this city because it is AA NHPI Heritage Month, and to really embrace the cultures. As I myself, as a Vietnamese American, I'm very fortunate to be where I'm at today and to never forget who you are and where you came from to be, to be able to lead and serve your community. I, I want to take a moment of silence, if we could all, as we close this evening's meeting. I'd like to take a moment to honor the memory of Sherry Newbury, who faithfully served the city of San Bernardino as a police records technician from August 31st, 1992, to September 16th, 2012. Sherry was a valued member of our public safety team, and her dedication to service left a lasting impact in the department and our community at this time, as we, that we observe a moment of silence in her memory.
Mayor, can we also add Ruben Juarez, Ruben Juarez out?
Yes, we can certainly.
...
Ruben Juarez will also, Juarez, will also be honored to close out tonight's meeting. Thank you. Please, please take a moment for silence. Thank you. May her memory and Ruben's memory continue to be a source of strength and pride for their loved ones in the city of San Bernardino. The meeting is now adjourned at 7:47 PM. The next joint special meeting of the Mayor and City Council and the Mayor and City Council Acting as the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, and the Mayor and City Council Acting as the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino Acting as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority, will adjourn to the special meeting to be held on May 22nd, 2025, at the Feldheim Central Library located at 555 West Sixth Street, San Bernardino, California 92410. Closed session will begin at 5:30 PM. Oh, we don't have closed session, I'm sorry. It'll just go straight to the meeting, 5:30 PM. Thank you. Have a good night. Get home safely.